Okay, now 7:33. I'd like to start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all for your patience. I'd like to have a reminder that this is being videotaped so we can record it live and you can go back and take a look at this meeting anytime you'd like. I want to read some condolences. First, a letter of condolence for Mr. McDermott. Mr. McDermott served in the United States Navy, aboard the USS Winondah during World War II, and was combat infantry veteran over five major engagements, recipient of the Bronze Star for valor while serving the United States Army during the Korean War. Also like to give my condolences or our condolences to the family of Thomas K. Hall. Mr. Hall was very active in the town of Bridgewater for a long time. Forgive me if I can't remember all the committees that he served on, and I know he did a lot for this town, and he will be missed. If I could have a moment of silence for these two gentlemen. I'd like to follow this up with another unfortunate moment of silence that I'd like to request. Since our last meeting, in fact, we've had two mass shootings, one in Pittsburgh at the synagogue, the other in Thousand Oaks in California. And it's kind of shocking that it's coming as fast as it is or as prevalent as it seems to be. And before we take this moment of silence for those two incidences, I'd like to read something that has been read here before. It's a proclamation that we put forth some time ago through the BCCR. So the town of Bridgewater presented the proclamation in support of the Bridgewater citizens for civility and respect. And I'd like to read this because it seems to be very prevalent. Once again, something that we should be reading sadly more often. Whereas Bridgewater, established in 1656, is a town with a diverse population of 27,000 people that has enjoyed a strong tradition of civil rights in which hate speech is not tolerated; whereas the citizens of Bridgewater have long upheld a tradition of respect with guarantees, civil rights for all; whereas incidents of hate speech and verbal assaults directed at individuals because their appearance or clothing choice, which reflects particular cultures, is in direct opposition with the traditions and values of this town; whereas the town of Bridgewater respects the rights of all persons in our town to live without fear of verbal or physical assaults and exercise freedom of cultural expression through choices of attire, religious practice, and speech; be it therefore resolved that the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, has declared a community of civility where intolerant speech and behavior are unacceptable, thus ensuring that our town remains a respectful place to live, work, attend school, visit, and conduct business. So with that said, I'd like to have another moment of silence. And now for president's announcements. Christmas on the Common. Quite a transition there. Christmas on the Common will be Sunday, December 2nd.
Are we going to approve that?
I'm sorry. Did I skip over the minutes?
Yes.
Let's go for those minutes. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons to approve the minutes?
Second.
Seconded.
I just asked a question. I didn't make a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll take that as a motion. Tim's on fire today. So a motion made and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, president's announcements. Christmas on the Common will be Sunday, December 2nd, 2018, from 12 to 4 p.m. on the town common. Bridgewater Town Common will be closed to north and southbound traffic from 10 to 5. We anticipate a huge Christmas on the Common event with two exclamation points. Also, for the second year, there will be a Christmas parade, which we discussed at the Veterans Parade, we're very happy about this, that will start at the Bridgewater-Ranham Regional High School and end at the common to drop Santa and Mrs. Claus off at the event. Super excited. Second year in a row, looking forward to it. Okay, on to proclamations. We have one of two gentlemen here tonight that were -- some of you folks here and some of you folks that may watch this on TV or on your iPhones or what have you, may have heard about it, an event that happened earlier in the year. So I will read this proclamation, or this proclamation is. Raymond Armstead and Ryan Saba. Whereas January 4th, 2018 marked the first large snow event of the year, and whereas road conditions and visibility were extremely poor, leading many vehicles to become stuck in deep driving snow; and whereas during that storm Raymond Armstead and Ryan Saba came upon a vehicle stuck in a large amount of snow on the train tracks; and whereas Mr. Saba pulled his truck over, and he and Mr. Armstead assisted the occupants of the trapped vehicle out of their car into Mr. Saba's truck; and whereas the town of Bridgewater recognizes that Mr. Saba and Mr. Armstead displayed quick action and bravery in thinking of the safety and care of others without concerning for themselves; therefore, the town council wishes to issue this proclamation to Raymond Armstead and Ryan Saba in recognition and gratitude for their honorable selfless and courageous acts on January 4th, 2018. Let's take this bad boy out. Go around, I'll meet you up front. If I wasn't, I'm sure I could get saved by Mr. Saba. Okay, time for citizens' open forum. If there are any citizens here that'd like to say a few words, have questions, come on up to the microphone, state your name, address, keep it within three minutes would be great.
Good evening. Sam Baumgartner, 60 Short Street. First, I want to know if this is known as the dark side over here. I'm speaking on behalf of the Bridgewater citizens for civility and respect specifically to thank you for requesting a moment of silence to honor the victims of the shootings in Pittsburgh, in the Pittsburgh synagogue, and in Thousand Oaks, clear examples of violence spurred on by hate. And of course, we are thankful that through this moment of silence and through the proclamation, which was nice of you to read again, that you as a council continue to support civility and respect in Bridgewater. Truthfully, and much to the regret of all of us, we could probably have a moment of silent remembrance and thought almost weekly, given the increasing episodes of hate, whether violent or nonviolent. I just was hearing on tonight's news that the FBI is reporting 17% increase in hate crimes over last year and 37% increase in anti-Semitic hate crimes over the past year. Last week at our BCCR meeting, we decided that immediate and direct responses, perhaps through standouts, marches, letters, phone calls, or even such moments of silence, are needed to help stem the tide of hate. One of our members reminded us of the importance of speaking up by sharing this quote. He said, "Evil triumphs when good people remain silent." So we cannot remain silent, and we hope that you as leaders in our town will speak as individuals and when needed will speak as a council to foster a more caring and tolerant world. May I also remind you of our forum sponsored by BCCR and the Public Library, which are designed to foster civil discourse and a mutual seeking of common ground when faced with contentious issues. Our first forum with Representative D'Amelia and Senator Porchico was quite successful in demonstrating such discourse, and we hope that our next forum on the topic of gun safety will do the same and lead to some common ground. I hope you'll join us on December 10th at 6:30 for this forum. Thanks very much.
Any other citizens who'd like to come up to say a few words? Seeing none, moving on to appointments. First, we have Stephen Rogan for Historical Commission and Cultural Council.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Now for the Cultural Council with Christina Montana.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and seconded. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Moving on to the Conservation Commission with Tiffany Souza.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. No hearings, license transactions, none, presentations, none. Town managers' report. Mr. Dutton.
Mr. President, I have a few items this evening. Some of it good news. For instance, just wanted to let the council know that the governor signed a supplemental budget bill specifically funding Chapter 90 a little more than it was. That granted us an additional $142,000 for road maintenance. We get an annual, usually get an annual appropriation from the state of about $718,000 to $730,000. So this is quite a meaningful bump, which we're appreciative of. We also secured another $50,000 through our state rep and state senator's efforts to offset the work done on Bridge Street. So if you recall, we had to do some drainage repairs, which were rather costly, down by, down off of Bridge Street on the other side of the river. So Bridgewater's total appropriation for Chapter 90 this year will amount to $903,239. So that's obviously better than the $700 change that we've gotten over the past number of years. So that's good news. I had a message from the MBTA Advisory Board, head of the advisory board, and they were looking at times for commuter rail trips coming to Bridgewater from Boston. And as they point out, most of the commuter rail lines, both north and, out of north and south stations, have trips out of Boston that leave after 11:00 p.m. But for communities served by four of the lines, the ones that are pertinent to us are Middleborough, Lakeville, Kingston, Plymouth, and also Stoughton, the trains don't leave there any later than 10:45. And one of the advisory board members was asking if we could take a look at offering later services on at least those three, the four lines altogether. So they did point out that every other line on the South Shore has at least one service at 11:20 or later, and all of the North Shore lines have service at midnight or later. So they were reaching out to the South Shore communities, including us, to see if we would be interested in a later trip, and if so, if there were any general guidelines around that. So I just said I would take any feedback. If any of the councilors have any opinions on it, feel free to reach out to me, and I will take that feedback to the advisory board, and they can go on and have a discussion with the MBTA about either scheduling later service throughout the week, just on weekdays, just on weekends, or what have you. So that is out there. So as I say, contact me, and I'll be happy to relay that, those messages to the advisory board. Also happy to report, we received a grant from the Commonwealth for the High Street Dam Greater Project. Actually, it's the High Street Dam Bridge Planning for us, the High Street Bridge Planning, for 105,000, almost $106,000. We've been working with a nature conservancy and several state and federal agencies, as well as the High Street Dam owner, which is not us, we don't own that dam, to plan for the possible removal of that dam and then do the planning work that would require, be required to replace the High Street Bridge if the dam were to be removed. So as I say, we're trying to prepare for the probable removal of the dam, and if the dam is removed, then it requires, essentially requires, that we replace the High Street Bridge because of the changes in velocity of water and so forth that would be necessary. But just as a matter of information, as most of councilors know, but for the public consumption, the town river joins the Matfield River and then obviously flows into the Taunton River, forms the Taunton River. The Taunton is the longest undammed coastal river in the state, and it has been the subject of a years-long effort by state, federal, local, and nonprofit partners to restore connectivity and water quality throughout the watershed. So this particular dam, which is quite old, very old, but this particular dam removal represents the last major project in the effort to do all that and will serve to connect Narragansett Bay to the high-quality herring-spawning habitat in Lake Nippenicket. Similar projects have been done, completed in this watershed, and have effectively connected all the major freshwater bodies with supportive habitat to the ocean. So that's what the possible benefits of the dam removal are here. The dam itself has been classified as a hazard, and it's in, classified according to the state classifications, is in poor condition. So as I say, we're using these grant monies to at least prepare for the possibility of the removal and be in a position where we can seek, excuse me, grant funding to complete our piece of that project should it come to pass. Also want to let the council know, we have submitted a pre-application to the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Cultural Facilities Fund, looking for feasibility money to look at potential uses, cultural and community uses for Town Hall. We're also in the process of placing that building on the National Historic Register. It is on the state's historic list, so that process isn't particularly difficult, although it is time-consuming, but that is underway. Another piece of good news, we've got a new van coming for the Elder Services Department. We secured that through Brockton Area Transit. They have federal and state money that is used to help cities and towns with transportation for, mostly for the elderly and disabled. And so that van will be coming to us probably within the next couple of weeks. It is free of charge to us, and the bat will handle all the routine maintenance as well. So it's a great deal for us, probably about a $70,000 value thanks to Brockton Area Transit. We have, as you see by tonight's agenda, we've had some great response, specifically Tiffany Souza, who is joining our Conservation Commission. She's a great candidate, young, ready to get going and learn about the town and the state's Wetland Protection Act. We've got obviously others that are joining the Cultural Council, which we're hoping to really use to leverage a lot of the downtown things that we would like to see done. So we've got good new blood coming into these committees. But I will just mention that we do have another space on the Conservation Commission. We have one more space on Open Space Committee. We have vacancies on the Water and Sewer Board and the Board of Health. So I am very excited about where we're going, especially with the committees that have openings. And so I would encourage anybody that is interested to reach out to me and, or anybody, any of the councilors or anybody involved in town, and just express your interest, and we'll get you the necessary materials and information to get you seated on one of those boards or committees. Just a reminder, your next meeting will be attended by our state rep, Angelo D'Amelia, who has agreed to come and talk with the council and pretty much anybody about what's going on at the state level. So that will be hopefully an exciting meeting. And I just wanted to pick up on what the president noted about the passing of Tom Hall. He served on the planning board, he was currently serving on the planning board and master plan committee, so those committees will feel a loss. He also had served on the energy committee fairly recently, but he was certainly a steady and thoughtful member, and we'll miss his input on certainly those two boards, but just generally, so just thought I'd mention that. And that's what I have for this evening.
Questions, comments for the manager? Mr. Wood?
Question. So to you, to the town manager. So when you were away at that convention, Mr. Patel was here, and I asked him a question about his doing business as, and he said he was doing business as Seaside, but the license says Skips. Last meeting, which was, what, three weeks ago, I asked you if paperwork had been submitted, and I think you explained that he'd been given direct instructions, and I talked to him again, saying that he had a small amount of time. And we know that ABCC has to get involved in that change of name. Do you have a status update for us tonight?
I can tell you, we've received no, the two things we had talked about in terms of paperwork for him, we've received no requests for Sunday hours, but we have also received no request for the change in name. And I can also tell you that he presented a request for modification to the planning board, and the request, the plans that he had used to present to the planning board were inaccurate. I guess that's the best way to describe it. So the planning board has continued their hearing on his request for a modification until December 6th, which falls after your December 4th meeting. So I can tell you, that's essentially where that stands right now.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. To you, to the town manager, a couple of things tonight. Spring Street Highway Barn, I do see that the truck is gone. I guess they packed up what they had in there and took it away. Could you give us an update on the status of emptying that out and the next thing after that, or have we got the environmental study back yet?
We have not gotten the environmental study back. We have gotten the, I believe we got the cursory environmental review back, but we have to do a deeper dive there. And everybody, as far as I'm aware, every department that had anything there, mostly fire department equipment, has removed it. So anything left in there is, will be taken to metal recycling or wherever the dump.
Okay. And the, can you give us an update, if you can, on the mobile station and where we are with acquiring that through eminent domain or?
I can give you an update there. We've, through our town attorney, have been corresponding with the owner's attorney in Florida. The owner still contends that the property as is is worth 1.5 million. We've asked for documentation and evidence of this notion and have yet to receive anything that approaches an appraisal per se. So we are going to continue the discussion with the owner, but I'm not optimistic that we'll come to a resolution on an agreeable price.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. President?
Who are you?
Don't expect you to know the answer, but if the owner contends it's worth one and a half million dollars, that's what he should be being taxed on, and I would suggest that you convey that to the assessors. Thank you.
I'll be happy to share the opinion of value with the assessor.
Without getting into details of my conversations with the other attorney, that was discussed. It's been discussed.
Okay, one more.
Mr. Gallagher?
One more. Last meeting, you know, we had a very fruitful discussion on zoning ordinance FY18008, the recreational overlay usage of marijuana. And, you know, reading through the minutes tonight and having watched a little bit of the replay on there, and I know you sent out, I think you sent out an email to me, and I know at least a few other councilors regarding what options we might have. Because, you know, I was a little confused as to the ramifications of a negative vote. I'll speak as one councillor. I was confused about the ramifications. I knew where I stood, and I tried to make amendments, and I still voted no, not knowing or understanding the full ramifications. I had hoped that we would have had a full council here to take a vote on that, but we didn't. We took a vote and it failed, and I understand that the planning board, with their recommendation, we can't bring that specific ordinance back for two years or one year and 11 and a half months. But could you just explain to me what you sent us and how we can have that go forward? And the other question that I have to you, to the town attorney, is I know when we had a different form of government, that a motion to reconsider in hopes that it passes would be in order if we wanted to reconsider our vote. Since none of that took place, would that be in order for tonight to take a motion to reconsider the ordinance in hopes that it passes? Would that be in order?
So relative to the motion to reconsider, my issue isn't that it couldn't have been on the agenda tonight. The problem is, I think it could have been and would have needed to be posted properly, otherwise it's an open meeting violation. So I would say you should not vote on a motion to reconsider unless it's properly posted. That could have been one of the items on the agenda. I don't know how it could not have been reasonably anticipated that that could have been an item on the agenda. So I'm looking at it from the Attorney General's perspective, and I think they would have probably said, hey, look, you guys had that long meeting and there was obviously some confusion, and if there was an issue that needed to come back before you all, which you can under your rules and procedures reconsider at the next succeeding date, I think it should have been posted.
So if we were to put that back on the agenda for reconsideration for us November 27th meeting, would that be in line or not? I don't want to do it.
I don't think so, because I think under your rules and procedures, which are slightly different than parliamentary rules and procedures, Robert's rules would have said you have to do the same day. Your rules and procedures actually allow for a motion to reconsider at the next succeeding meeting date. The problem is, it had to have been properly posted. This is the next succeeding meeting. And so if it was posted in advance of this, I'd say that that is a motion that could be contemplated. I don't think it can be contemplated at the next meeting, and I think to contemplate it tonight could be an open meeting violation.
Okay. Then I go back to my first question to Mr. Dutton, is I know you sent something out of a possible way of trying to accommodate, you know, the concern of any residential area getting one of these, that there was some sort of proposal. Did it come through an ordinance or resolution, or how could we move forward with that and have discussion at a future meeting?
I think we had a, town attorney and Jennifer Burke and I had a meeting after your, had a session after your last meeting, and we think that if we can craft something that addresses the table of uses only and none of the other addresses the table of uses only and none of the other parts of it, if we can craft something that just addresses the table of uses and doesn't exactly mimic what was contemplated in the ordinance, then that's something that doesn't, would not be, I think Jason can probably speak to this better than I can, but that would not be revisiting that same issue. It would be something different enough from the ordinance so that it would be, you know, a valid, if voted, would be a valid zoning ordinance. So that's what we were looking at. She's going to try to craft something that she can present to you either the next meeting or first meeting in December.
The way that we were analyzing it was from the perspective that your ordinance had to do with the Elm Street Overlay District, and it had to do with the permitting and number of these things within the Elm Street Overlay District. So Michael's absolutely right. What we were saying is that there's an opportunity for additional zoning, but it can't be defined as the Elm Street Overlay District zoning for this. It'll have to go on the table of uses. And if it's crafted in such a way where it's only allowable by special permit in the Elm Street Overlay District, that's the exact same thing. So we're talking about it if you, and this is up to you guys, and I'm happy to consult, but I don't want to put words in any of your mouths about what you want to have happen here. But hypothetically speaking, if the table of uses said, you know, it's in all industrial by special permit and business by, however you all craft this, that's a different ordinance, okay? This was about the Overlay District on Elm Street. So I think that would be different enough.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. George?
Through you to the town manager. Mr. Dutton, so if you could, for the November 27 meeting, if we could get some sort of simple announcement that we could post, but also if you could send it out to us, I would really, sorry, I'm not used to people not hearing me. I'd also like for people just to push that out to the public, because, you know, I would love it if we had both legislators here, but we have our rep here. So I think it would be a good opportunity for people to be able to voice their concerns, ask questions, things of that nature around the things that we deal with on a basically daily basis. So if you could do that, that'd be great.
Absolutely. No, we'll make sure that it's well-publicized, and I'll send out some sort of invite so that you can, you know, spread it around to folks that, in your precincts and throughout town.
Great. Thank you.
So the microphones feedback when you're far away and they have to crank it up, so then you start, the other microphones pick it up. So I did get a few emails and Facebook messages that we need to be heard and to get a little closer to the microphone, so they don't have to turn it up as loud. We don't have feedback, and everybody at home can hear us. So those of you at home, sound check.
Sound clear.
Any other questions for the town manager in regards to the town manager's report? Excellent. Now moving on to Jay, discussions?
Okay.
Ms. Ayesha Loesch?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
Thank you. So as we've been discussing for the past few meetings, the Rules and Procedures Team Committee has been crafting a checklist that was based roughly and mainly on what our lovely town council clerk created for orientation. The things that we've changed since the last meeting are now in bold, so wanted to have the council look at it, provide feedback. I'll quickly talk through what we've added, making sure that when someone is onboarded, they have a full understanding, or at least access to the charter, our council rules and Robert rules of order. We ensure that they understand that they'll get a town email. We also want to ensure that they're implementing their one-on-ones with the town manager, because that's something that is available to all councilors, and they should be meeting with the town manager if they have concerns. We also made note of when meeting materials are usually available. And then when you write legislation, just having it be proofed by our council clerk to ensure that it's written appropriately, and she can help with any edits. So those are the changes that we have made, and wanted to get any feedback from the overall council before we kind of bring this forward.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Thank you for putting this together. I think it's great. I'd just add a note or something to the one-on-one meetings with the town manager, that while you may be one councillor sitting down with the town manager, you have no power, more power than Mr. Momgarten sitting down with the town manager. The only thing that the town council can do is direct the town manager as five votes to do something. So just to stress that, again, individually we are not his boss. Collectively, we are. And I think that's important to stress to new councilors who may think that their opinion means more than anybody else's in the town when they're sitting down one-on-one with the town manager.
Thank you for that. If you could craft some language around that, so we can include that?
Sure. I'll send you an email.
Yeah, that it encompasses your feelings.
Nice volley.
Really good at it.
Any other discussion on the town councillor orientation checklist?
The only other thing I can consider is with the open meeting law, hand-in-hand kind of goes the conflict of interest. I don't know if that's something you want to explain to them a little bit about the conflict of interest regarding, you know, being involved in other things, the $50 limit on gifts, you know, the simple conflict of interest.
Yes, we can probably add that, because we have a training for that.
There is a training, yeah.
Oh, there is. Yeah, okay. Just a thought, yeah.
It's 50 or 60?
50.
50?
Oh.
I never go over 5. Nobody gives me any money.
All right.
My dad. Dad gives you money.
And while I continue to have the microphone, we'll move to the council committees. So Rules and Procedures, we're really getting into the weeds of our own business. And within our rules, we have a number of committees that are supposed to be created, and we don't actually have them all. So we have a Budget and Finance Committee, we have a Rules and Procedures Committee, we have a Public Safety Committee, Community and Economic Development, and the last one is a Partnership Committee, which I believe has not been created or hasn't been active for some time. So we wanted to discuss that as a council. And I know that we've had different committees. We've had a Casino Committee, we've had different ad hoc things, but we wanted to understand, we wanted to bring back the partnership. My understanding of what it was, and Mr. Wood, please correct me if I'm wrong, was about working with the university and other entities in town as a partnership. And that was a committee that was created, or at least named, when we moved to this form of government. And we wanted to discuss if we wanted to reinstate it or shift one that's not as active or has never been active back to this.
Mr. Wood?
Thank you. Yeah, that was one. And the history is, of course, making sure that we've got good communication between the town and the college in all aspects, and there's an effective boots-on-the-ground committee group, that sort of thing. So I don't think that committee's been active for a number of years. But this, in our discussions, if I may, so this gives us the opportunity to kind of refine what we want to do with our committee structures. So at one point, we had an ad hoc committee for the SFI. I served on that for a while. We had a gaming committee. I think Mr. George was on that. We've had this partnership committee. It's in the Rules and Procedures, and as we go to adopt new rules and procedures, we can form committees within that structure that aren't covered by the charter. The charter does cover a handful of them. And I had one idea, and this seems like the appropriate forum to throw this out. Over the years, we've talked about downtown revitalization. It's kind of slow-moving. And my idea was that we form a committee of the council that includes a couple people plus an at-large that would kind of be an oversight body to help facilitate the things that need to go on to get the downtown planning moving. And so that would work with the town manager and any of the staff that he allocates that might visit the businesses and get their feedback. It's more than the 2020 group that existed with just citizens. It's a group of us, just as a committee, that can work with public safety, strategy, budget. Budget's critical. The traffic and anything else that pertains strictly to the downtown area, because we've had two or three reports. We've had years of discussions, but my eye's not, anything has really moved. So I think if we put this group together and kind of give it the mission to do that, it's different than the Community and Economic, because that's a much broader sense. This would be focused on the common, the surrounding businesses and that sort of thing, that it might be beneficial to get things moving over the next couple of years. That's an idea I had, anyway.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I think Mr. Wood's idea is great, and if I could make a motion to actually create an ad hoc committee till we reform it under new rules and procedures we adopt, if that would be appropriate, I'd like to do that.
So your motion to create an ad hoc along the lines of what Mr. Wood presented?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Those in favor of creating an ad hoc committee?
Are we going to have discussion?
We could discuss it, yeah, we could. Would anybody like to discuss this before?
I guess, one, I have no problem with that. I know there's a committee, Tim, that was formed to work with the developer that was going to redevelop Broad Street area. Is that still intact? Is that a similar type of committee Bill's talking about?
That was, I think that was a broader range of people. That we had the Planning Board, the Zoning Board involved. This is a council committee, as far as I understand, Mr. Wood's suggestion, and that we would work with the committee. I don't want to be on it. Please don't appoint me. The committee would work with Mr. Dutton and the town planner to actually go back and do all the reading of the reports that were done, stuff that needs to get done, and how do we actually go from reports written on paper, put up on a shelf somewhere, to actually getting things done on the ground. That's my interpretation of what Mr. Wood said.
That's correct.
Things like Traffic Study Committee, or the Traffic Study, whatever happened, and all the various, this is something maybe we talked about in strategic planning with all those. Dust them off, but specific to the downtown business area.
That's the intent of my motion.
Yeah. Mr. Collobotus?
It sounds like what you guys are talking about is a steering committee, essentially, right? Where there's kind of this overall initiative, and we want to, this group would shepherd it and make sure things are getting done.
That's the right word. Shepherd the other activities through the process, right?
I believe that the Master Plan Committee has kind of looked at that, kind of looked at managing this ongoing progress of this initiative. I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to have it not be a council committee, but rather a committee that's formed of some members of the council, but also the public at large. I know with the School Study Committee, for example, we had, that was a collaboration. I'm not sure if there were selectmen on that committee or not, but it was citizens, composed largely of citizens with expertise and this sort of thing. And I'm wondering if it wouldn't make sense to include citizens on this and not have it be a council committee, but rather a kind of joint committee from, you know, to tap into the talents of some citizenry in addition to this.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I think that'd make more sense.
If I might answer, Mr. Collobotus, and, you know, we can certainly disagree on it. I think having three councilors sit on a committee that meets with the town manager regularly, that meets with the town planner regularly, who could actually also interact with the Master Plan Committee, the Planning Board, and have them come in, is probably a more efficient use, rather than trying to dilute it at that highest level. Because if I understood, and I'm just taking Mr. Wood's notion, because I loved it when I heard it, and, you know, that we, as a council, need to direct the town manager, the Master Plan Committee, the planner, the Planning Board, all of whom serve essentially at our pleasure, as to what we want to happen in the downtown, and get input from all those folks as to how we can fund this, how we can make things happen. But I think it sends a strong statement to the residents of the town that says, yeah, the town council is taking this seriously. They are, you know, sitting down regularly with the town manager, with the town planner, with all of the interested constituencies, and saying, you know, let's move off of square one. Let's move off of square one. Because I think to Mr. Wood's point, he doesn't feel like we've moved off of square one yet.
We haven't moved off the shelf yet, that's true. So I think the proper word was shepherding, capstone, you know, planning, that sort of thing, as a steering committee, as it were. And yeah, it was intended, my idea is intended to keep the core figures within the council, but obviously to bring in experts, right? So there's experts about master planning. But again, that's a broad reach across the entire town. So we want to keep focus on downtown. There's experts on traffic control, there's experts on public safety, there's experts across the whole thing. So the committee would want to bring those experts into the fold and meet with them and understand the process and bring ideas into the process.
I'm a fan. Action. It sounds like we could get some action. And downtown's a hot button. We had a lot of moving pieces. Great potential. Downtown revitalization, progress movement, action. Any other discussions? Let's just take the motion, those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Those against? All right. I guess we have an ad hoc steering.
Mr. President, through you.
Yes, Mr. George?
One follow-up question. So Council Loesch pointed out that we do have a committee that we don't have anyone on. So do we take the time now, tonight, to staff that? Or what's the mechanism? Because...
Was there more information on what the Partnership Committee was originally charged?
With all due respect, Mr. President, through you to Mr. George, it's the president's job to appoint the committee. I would urge him, with all due speed, to reach out to councilors and say, you know, who would like to be on this partnership committee, learn more about it, but get that committee appointed.
So I'll add some cubes to this chart that I've got here for committees.
And I'll add, just for the record.
Right now.
Although, you know, I'd like to see this idea come forward, and I'd love to participate on it. My mother owns a piece of property that is close enough to the center of town that would be a potential conflict of interest, so I can't serve on the committee.
Okay. So there's no movement on the Partnership Committee. We'll get that going. It is my responsibility to fill a seat until I'm not the president and somebody else's. And it looks like we'll be adding some squares and moving a name or two. So excellent discussion. On to the next one, downtown pedestrian bike and traffic patterns. Mr. Dutton?
So, Mr. President, this discussion plays in a little bit with what you were just discussing. We are getting ready to hire a traffic engineer or come to the council with an appropriation for a traffic engineer. It's kind of a momentous occasion, because we actually now have funding to be able to do, knock off a lot of the items in preparation for a larger grant funding possibility down the road for Central Square specifically. So I think somebody said there are a lot of moving parts downtown. This is one of them. And in the 2014 Cecil Group report, Downtown Revitalization Plan, they identified three options for traffic circulation. So I just wanted to have a quick, you know, show it to you to remind you what it was, and then have a very quick conversation about any things that the council generally would not be in favor of, or any things that the councilors would be in favor, the council would be in favor of. So these are two of the options. And as you can see, they largely keep the current rotary, I'll call it a rotary, and with north to south traffic on the west side and south to north traffic on the east side. And if...
Mr. Dutton, could you maybe go to full page view, under View? Make it bigger. Where is it?
Full screen mode?
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Well, there you go.
He'll be able to zoom in.
Make it very large. So here you see, yeah, largely parking on both sides of Central Square with effectively one through lane going each direction. There are two arrows here, but it's effectively one through lane. So that's one option. Provides additional parking, it changes, eliminates some of the crosswalks, and largely keeps the same traffic pattern. Slightly different, maintains two additional crosswalks that were eliminated in the first option, and eliminates what would be parking right up against the common. So otherwise, very similar to what we have today. So the third option, is everybody okay with it? Everybody's okay? So the third option. The third option is, and the preferred solution at the time, was something that looked like this. This right over here is the Academy Building, this is Town Hall, just to get your bearings, gas station is down here, the bank, Bridgewater Savings is right here. So this replaces one-way traffic on the east side of Central Square with two-way traffic. So this would be two-way here. This would be two-way, but it would be essentially some sort of raised pavement, and effectively used more as a pedestrian plaza and parking on either side. So essentially, to and from places to park, this would be two-way traffic on this side. And Lisa Jacobson was the woman that actually had come up with this concept, and as she admitted, this is not something that's an engineered plan, this is just a concept. So the next step for us is to come up with, you know, more engineered concepts, or take the concept and translate it into an engineered design, and something that's feasible, and that will pass muster with Massachusetts DOT. So having looked at this on my desktop for the last three years, because it's my desktop screen, I began to wonder why we were pushing the two-way, if this is the preferred solution, why we were pushing the two-way traffic to the east side of Central Square, when most of the pedestrian, potential pedestrian traffic for Central Square really comes from down here, comes from Bridgewater State University. And if it wouldn't make more sense to essentially flip this, and make the pedestrian parking area on the east side, and then the two-way traffic on the west side. And I'm no traffic engineer, but it just seemed that that might make a lot more sense, especially if we were trying to convince pedestrians to use Central Square a little more than they currently do. I would also add that this piece is all part of what's now designated the Opportunity Zone. So if there's a potential for redevelopment along Central Square, I can't help but think that redevelopment would be much more attractive to folks with some sort of pedestrian, mixed pedestrian parking area on the east side, rather than the west side. So essentially, what I wanted to do tonight is just have that, basically have that conversation, and if there's counselors that have any ideas that I can share with the traffic engineer when we bring them on, I just thought it would be more useful to have a little bit of a brainstorming session now, rather than, you know, when we're about to break ground.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
So let me just understand what I'm looking at here, and then comment about your idea of flipping it. Essentially, South Street goes into a dead end at the bank, correct?
Here, yeah.
In this one. In your idea, Bedford Street would go into a dead end at the gas station, essentially, more or less, right? Do we know how much commerce comes up 1828, AKA Bedford Street, i.e. big trucks, and then goes left or straight onto their destinations, or vice versa? And then if we imagine that commerce going the other way, and having to cut through where you're saying, let's flip it, and then have to take the right, and then take the right on, take the left, I'm sorry, and take the right on Bedford Street, what's that going to do to South Street traffic as we're doing that? So that would just be my comment.
Good question. That one I can add.
Mr. Wood?
So I've had a couple of people comment that we have too many crosswalks across both sides. And even in this sketch, and the other two, it was three. That's why I like the idea of that committee, right? So they can sit down and talk about this stuff. Because I've had the suggestion that we condense it into one middle one, which protects the pedestrians down near the turning radius at Summer Street onto the common, and South Street and Bedford Street onto the common, where people at those crosswalks are difficult to see at night, and are difficult to see when people are navigating, three or four cars going on. So I'm just wondering, you know, if anyone in the past, and anyone on the council may have memory of this, whether anyone talked about condensing the crosswalk down into the middle, and what effect that would have. I don't have a solution, I just will put that out there as maybe a talking point for the new committee and other people involved in this.
I do remember a lot of talk about that, one just past the gas station. White Chessmans. Mr. Collobatus?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Dutton, do we, this funding we approved, we have available for a traffic consultant, an engineer, is essentially to vet, to kind of flesh out these conceptual plans, to see if they're viable, right? To see if they're feasible.
Correct.
Can we do that with two plans? Or do we need, could we say, which, you know, see if both of, either of these will work? Because that's, the first step is viability, right?
Right.
And then, after that, then we choose among the viable plans, which we think is best. So we could, you're kind of, you're asking for input here from the council to?
I guess, yes. And what, I mean, I'm just beginning the conversation, and I'm certainly not asking for any commitment this evening, because that won't come until, you know, the engineer has done the work and presents, you know, options. But just in terms of me giving guidance to the engineer, you know, obviously I've got a list of items that clearly need to be addressed, but if there's any kind of preference in providing direction, as a concern, as a more radical, you know, re-engineering of traffic, then I just thought it would be useful to get comments. As I say, I'm not looking for consensus, certainly I wouldn't do that, I wouldn't spring that out, but I'm just looking for comments that anybody might have on that.
I mean, personally, I think the notion of a sort of pedestrian sort of plaza would be great, if it could work. So I'd be inclined to entertain, I guess, well, ideally even, both the original plan as we see here, and the suggestion you had to flip that pedestrian to the east side of the common. You know, so maybe if we could vet three different proposals, you know, this original one, I guess first is look to, yeah, this, the original one, the flipped one, and then a version of the less dramatic. So it'd be great if this engineer could, you know, look at these three proposals and see which, see if they're all viable. I don't know if that's within the scope of the project or not.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yeah, I'm all, thank you, Mr. President. I certainly think that something needs to get done, I think this is a good start. My whole thing would like to see the common become a destination area, not a cut-through. And I think that's pretty much what it's used for now. It's people coming from Middleborough wanting to get through, to get to, you know, go down 18 or into Brockton. I'd like to see it become more destination-friendly, with Music Alley in the summer, and maybe other things that come down the road. And has any of these studies, or in the future study, has there ever been any consideration, I don't even know if it would help, is to make school street two ways? Has that ever been talked about?
That actually, yes, was talked about in the 2014 study, and it's certainly wide enough to be two-way.
Because maybe if, you know, that would maybe have some traffic from Bedford Street might, you know, cut through to avoid the common if they're not going to go there, could help. I mean, things like that, I don't know if there's any way to put a new road in from Bedford to school over the summer, so they can just go through like that. But my whole thing, I'd like to see it become more destination-friendly, not cut-through, cut-through friendly.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Since we're having discussion, we should throw out radical ideas, too. Anyone want to blow up the common and start again?
Move it to the left.
So if money was no object, and I'm thinking this, I think it's the Science Building at Harvard, where they effectively dug the highway underneath, and it's a large, open area, that pedestrians can move between buildings and whatnot. If money was no object, that's what I would suggest.
Any other radical suggestions? I like the arc.
Can I just add one more?
Sure, Mr. Collobatus, go ahead.
I think collateral effects of trying to make the common more pedestrian-friendly will inevitably bring in a direct traffic to adjoining streets. I mean, that's what this notion of traffic calming is, is essentially slowing vehicular traffic down, making it easier for people to walk. And that could have an impact on adjoining streets, something Union, Union Street, even Stetson for that matter, we've heard about people passing through streets like Stetson. So I imagine, I assume that an important part of the engineer's review will be how these sorts of initiatives would have an effect on adjoining neighborhoods. And so things like speed tables on Union Street might make sense to slow people down, so they're not, you know, if people are using it as a cut-through, they'll realize they need to travel at 20 miles an hour, not 35, on a residential street like that. So perhaps you could confirm that with the engineer, that we look at collateral effects, changes here.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just echo Mr. Collobatus. This, you know, these ideas may look good in theory, sitting up here, but you always have to worry about the unintended consequences. And you brought up several, which is very appropriate, so I agree completely.
Primary, secondary, tertiary impact on the roads spreading from the common out would be the emphasis on whoever's doing that study.
And that is actually part of, part of the work that we contemplate, you know, doing traffic counts in the downtown areas is the first thing that'll get done, and then based on that, we'll have a better idea of where the traffic's coming from and where it's going.
I'm sure there's some fantastic traffic modeling that you can do via satellite or something special, and see all that awesome stuff. Look forward to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to committee reports? All right, committee reports. Any councils like to report on their committees?
Sure.
Mr. Wood?
The Budget and Finance Committee has met a couple of times now to look at a draft of the budget resolution. So next week, or next meeting, you'll see that on board as the first reading. We've talked about different changes, the finance directors introduced some new language. We haven't made any real harsh amendments. So the first reading, take a look at it before the meeting, get some ideas if there's anything specific you want changed, and then we can talk about it at that point. Thanks.
Any others? Seeing none, moving on to legislation for action, Resolution RFY 19-01, 2019 Town Council Meeting Dates, introduced by Counselor Ayesha Loesch. Ready to get a look at the dates?
Looks great. I move to, uh...
Okay. Got a motion to move and seconded. Those in favor of the dates? Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Dates, I'm going to save this.
Save that, put that in my bag.
Moving to old business, no old business, new business. Order FY 19-028, transfer station enterprise fund. Sorry.
Mr. President, if I may make a suggestion?
Yes.
I believe all of these are going to be referred to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees, so I'd just turn all of them over to the town manager and let him explain all of them, and we could have an omnibus motion to refer.
Omnibus.
If that's appropriate.
I think that's fully appropriate. Mr. Dutton?
I will run through these quickly, these are all on for first reading, and several of them need to have action before we can set the tax rate. First one, transfer station enterprise, I think the budget, the finance director has explained that we're running, have been running a deficit in the transfer station. We are in the process of making some changes, which will resolve that, but for the tax rate purposes, we have to bring that budget revenue figure down. Then, second one, Old Scotland Links, we have to bring their revenue figure down, and then make corresponding adjustments to the expenses. That'll reduce the amount that they're transferring back into our stabilization fund. As you, you know, as you recall, we sort of used stabilization as a funding source, with the understanding that we were going to pay that back, so that they're going to have to pay back a little less than they anticipated, but that payback is still ongoing. The item C, FY 19 tax allocation, is your yearly adoption of the residential factor. We are not anticipating anything strange there, we'll do a residential factor of one, which means we have a consistent tax rate among residential, commercial, industrial, open space properties. The digital document storage project is what I've been discussing for some time. We now have some funding that we're going to ask you to be able to use to digitize documents and then store them off-site. Hopefully, it'll make it much easier for everybody, not only staff, but citizens, to look up items that pertain to their particular homes. Then contractual employee sick leave buyback, this is one for anticipated retirements. We have an obligation for some of the bargaining units, and some of the employees within those bargaining units, to pay accrued sick leave, so that funds our contractual obligation for those. And then rescinding the prior year's authorization and unused loan order, that's just basically cleaning up the books on a lot of outstanding authorized but unissued borrowing. So those are, that one's pretty simple.
Couple of questions, if I may.
You may, Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I believe you missed Transportation Engineering Services.
Oh, the most important one, I'm sorry. That's the, that's the piece that actually funds the, what we were just discussing with a transportation engineer, that will look at not only Central Square area, but there are a couple of their high important, you know, important intersections in town that we're also going to be looking at with the engineer.
Continuing, if I may?
You may continue, sir. You may continue, sir.
Old Scotland Links. They actually made money, but not as much as we hoped, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Classification, tax allocation. Do we need to have a hearing on that?
You do have a hearing and after you, I believe after you refer it to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee, that the council clerk is going to ask for you to direct her to set a hearing date.
I was going to ask without her asking me, but since you've asked me, it said that she'd ask me to ask her. We'll go ahead and direct it after we do move that to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees.
One more, if I may. Sick leave buyback. Is that still a provision for new employees coming in?
No.
Bargaining units or is it a holdover?
That is a holdover. So all of those are holdovers within those collective bargaining agreements. And when I say holdover, some time ago, the town negotiated out sick leave buyouts or sick leave buybacks and, and it was effective for employees hired after X date. So these are the residuals, so.
But the hired, there's another provision now in the contracts, hired after, after X date, you don't get sick leave buyback.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. With that said, unless other people have questions, I'll make a motion to.
Oh, one question from Mr. George.
Through you to the town manager. After this season for Old Scotland Links, what will they owe, if anything, to the town stabilization fund?
They will owe, they've got two, I believe we structured it as a two-year payback. But I'll have to get you the exact number. I don't have it off the top of my head.
So this will be year number one and then next fiscal year will be year number two?
Correct.
So the full expectation is by next fiscal year will be whole?
Correct.
Thank you.
Motion to refer all of new business to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Motion made and seconded to move A through G to Budget and Finance and Finance Committees. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? So moved and made, and I would like to ask the clerk to get that hearing scheduled for 12:04. Okay, now for citizens' comments. Anybody like to come up and say, state your name and address?
Linda Howard and I live on Crescent Street. And one of the things that I'd like, that I've been meaning to address with the council and actually, Mr. Fitzgibbons, I believe you are my town councilman, is crosswalks, especially near the school. My son is a student at Williams and there's a crosswalk at the end of Crescent Street and South. And that is really a problem. I can be standing there with my big dog and five or six cars go by without stopping. And my son's a walker. And, you know, my neighbor does daycare. She lives on Crescent Drive. She can have double-wide stroller and cars just keep flying by. And I noticed that in the center of town, you put those nice signs with the, that flash and show that there is a crosswalk there. And I didn't know what, the possibility of getting that close to a school. Because I, I mean, it's really bad at that crosswalk. And I'm concerned that he, you know, walking. And other parents have, and the same concern.
Thank you. Thank you. Do you have?
Well, no, I just, what is the process for getting something like that approved? I mean, you know, there's a crossing guard. I don't know if there's a crossing guard in the afternoon, but I know there's one in the morning at the end of 104 and South Street. And I feel like that, the crosswalk at Crescent and South is closer to the school than 104 and South. And we have nothing like that, so.
I could ask the town manager to provide some input to that.
Okay.
If, we can certainly take a look at that. If you want to just shoot me an email basically saying what I've already written down, but I'll, I'll see, I'll circulate that with the Transportation Committee and also our roadway superintendent and we'll, and the police chief and see what we can do, both short-term and long-term.
And then will you follow up with me or?
We'll follow, well, either we'll solve the problem or we'll let you know.
Follow up, okay.
Yep. But if you just shoot, shoot an email, that would be perfect.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Hello, I'm Taylor Sullivan, 250 Norland Park. Just had a couple of things I wanted to share and I don't know if I'm allowed to ask questions to the town manager and town attorney, but.
Not, not me.
Oh, well, I'll just kind of, I will.
You can phrase it towards the town manager and.
Okay. Maybe through him. So just a couple of things, though, after two weeks ago, the vote, you know, a lot of people in our, the Bridgewater Cares Group were really upset. And so obviously, we're not lawyers, so we were trying to figure out, kind of trying to understand the laws and all that stuff. So we actually had hired a municipal attorney just to kind of ask some questions and guidance because we know we can't really communicate directly with our town attorney. So basically what we asked, what, you know, was about the two-year hiatus. And what they said, what he had said was a few things. One, he had mentioned a motion for reconsideration. You know, and, and again, I know that that was some issue with the open meeting laws, but he had thought that according to GLC 40A, Section 5, that that would be able to be done. But other than that, I know that you mentioned the open meeting violation. And then also he took a look at the agenda from the, the night of the vote, which was a few weeks back. And on that agenda, it does say actually that the planning board recommended the ordinance. And I know there was some confusion on that. When I was at the meeting, I thought that the planning board didn't recommend the ordinance. And what they, what I think happened was they did recommend the original ordinance, but they just didn't like, they didn't want testing to be everywhere, not in any particular zone. So that was, I'm assuming that's why it said on the agenda that they recommended it, that they recommended the original, but not the unlimited testing. I'm not sure, but that's what the agenda said. So that was what he had brought up. And then he said that the, the two-years rule would not have to apply for this. And this was kind of my question for going forward. He said that a six-month hiatus under Article 14 of the council rules allows for proposed ordinance to be considered again if a simple majority are in favor. So where that vote, even though it failed because we needed a two-thirds, he was saying that because there was a simple majority, that it can actually be brought up within six months because most of the councillors, with the exception of Dennis and Mr. Wood, you know, voted in favor. So that was my question that I wanted to ask. That I think is.
If, Mr. President, if you want.
Mr. President, this is comments, so I think we have to stick within the confines of what that is defined as.
So you've got three points that were made.
I only have a question on one of them, just the.
The final one at the two years.
Yeah, so.
So we, I would say that there'd be an answer forthcoming, but not at this moment.
Okay, so would, would I, would we email the town manager to?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll follow up with the town manager and let you know because you're at the end of my street, my old street.
Yes, Tim DeGraw. You grew up there, right?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other citizen comments? Okay, seeing none. Council comments, starting at my right. Mr. Souza?
I wrote them down. I'm not happy. This may anger a few people, but I'm going to say what I'm going to say. Mr. President, you on about 7/11/18 made the assignments, the council members to the different subcommittees. At that time, you removed me from the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Public Safety Committee. You assigned me to the Gaming Committee, which is an ad hoc committee, which has never met and probably never will. I felt that was an insult to me. Okay? I have spoken to you about this. The first time you said it was a mistake. The following times we spoke, you said you were looking into it and working on it. This has been seven months. That's a slow pace. As a chairman, as a president of this council, you should be setting example for the committee people, the chairman of all our committees and boards, as to how they treat their people in their boards and committees. Okay? You put together, when I was, I had proposed an, a plan to put together a committee to look into zoning and the zoning ordinance. And Councilman Bill Wood sent it to a committee that you were chairman of. Three months later, I asked you where it was. You said you didn't even know it was there. And after the meeting in front of a group of people, which I had comments about from some of them later, you said that I threw you under the bus. You failed to do your job. That's how I felt. Okay? There was another issue. And the boards. You know, the council, the voters elected you to the council to represent the town and to work together, together with the entire council. And when you became the president, there is something that I missed at the very, very beginning. I wasn't going to bring it up, but I think I will. Shortly after I got elected to this council, you and a couple of other council members referred to me as the old man. I felt highly insulted and I didn't think that was very appropriate. And it seems like we have a pattern here of the way you treat me. It's like, I don't belong here. And when you finally became the president of the council, that's exactly what you did. You know, and recently you were joking and laughing about only one council member has ever been removed from the council when they ran for reelection while they were seated. Well, I'm hoping the voters make you number two.
Mr. Colombo.
I'd just like to express my sympathy for the Ed Hall's family. I worked with, Tom, I'm sorry, Tom. I worked with Tom on the, when he was on the planning board. He was always very thoughtful and had the best interest of town at heart. So I would just miss him and his dedication to the town and extend my sympathies to his family. Thank you.
Mr. Wood.
Hi, too. I'm wearing a ribbon tonight made by the robotics team in memory of Tom. I knew Tom through the robotics team. I didn't know all the boards and committees he had, he had worked on and and businessman and farmer, lived around here all of his life. But it was this committee input after he retired that really impressed me. And although we disagreed on a couple of things, you know, he was, he was your standard Yankee, not Yankee fan, but, you know, New England, New England Yankee, small-town guy and really gave back to his community. And I look at someone like Tom and I hope a lot of people met him because he was really a role model for what the participation in the community really means. And, and I know we'll all miss him. It was, it was great to know him for as long as I did. Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a couple of things tonight. I want to thank the, the eighth grade class, class students and particularly Dory McLukless for hosting Veterans last Friday at the, at the High School for Veterans Day event, where we got an opportunity to speak to the eighth graders about my service and others were there as well. It was, it was a great event at the, it was the eighth graders, which are now hosted at the high school. And it was a, it was a great morning at the school, answering their questions and showing them some pictures of me and my service back in the 1980s. It was, it was a nice event. I also want to congratulate the high school marching band for winning first place Sunday at the Veterans Day Parade, Tri-Town Veterans Day Parade, which was held in East Bridgewater. They did a very good job and won first place in the marching band contest. And I think we won first place in another category as well. I don't remember what it was, but I think it was the Cub Scouts or Boy Scouts or something. So we did very well. It was a nice chilly day, marching down Spring Street in, in East Bridgewater. It was, it was a nice event. I want to thank our council president for, for reading the Citizens for Civility and Respect proclamation that was brought before the council a couple of years ago. There has been a lot that has taken place in this, in this country since our last meeting. And not just within the past two weeks, but that the rhetoric that's going on around the country is, is not good. And as much as we can respect each other, no matter what our backgrounds or our heritage, heritage is, we're all in this together. We need to get along with, with each other. And I don't think we have another meeting before Thanksgiving, so I want to wish everybody, including my colleagues, a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark. Chase, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
If Fred Clark was back here, that would be something.
I'll answer to that. I just wanted to say I felt it very encouraging this evening to find that we're continuing to staff boards and commissions with those expressing interest in those positions. And it's, it's certainly a good sign. I know that we've seen a number of vacancies filled in recent months and I would hope to see that trend continue. Just one other final comment. The town manager has sought input with respect to the proposal by the MBTA. You'll, you can certainly anticipate my response, being a, being a commuter on that line. And I look forward to that. Thank you.
Mr. George.
Just a couple of things. Had a very good time at the, the Tri-Town Veterans Parade on Sunday. It was a great turnout. The weather held up for us, which was great. I appreciate everyone that was there. I know we had a resident come up, talk about the crosswalks within Bridgewater, especially for schoolchildren. We also have a major issue with people not heeding the rules of the road when it comes to school buses. And we've already seen some news articles about some tragic events that are 100% avoidable. And I, I hope that we're going to take some proactive steps to not only remind people of what the rules are, but also increase public safety. And lastly, I just want to kind of do a shout out to Ms. Cordero. I wish you did have the shutzpah to stand up and read exactly what you just emailed all of us. I very much appreciated reading this and hopefully you come back and, and feel inclined to talk to us. Thank you very much.
Ms. Loesch.
I just have a couple of things that were brought up today, namely in regards to the vote that we took for the zoning ordinance at our last meeting. We can all go back to the tape, which I actually love. That's recorded. I wanted one to follow me and my husband around because I'd be right 97% of the time. Mr. Fitzgibbons numerous times called the fact that if we voted in a certain way, we would have what we have. Mr. Fitzgibbons also wanted to postpone the vote too today because we may have had the outcome which we had, which we did. Mr. George had asked very pointed questions to our town attorney about the legality of what we were doing and if there were going to be any issues. So we had a very long and lengthy conversation where lots of important pieces of information were shared and which is why I informed my vote for the way that I voted. So for us to have questions or not fully understand, that should have been discussed in that moment. We should have been fully understanding of what we were voting for. And when you vote for something, you have to understand what you're doing because there, there are consequences for your actions. So with that, I'm sorry to have missed the parade. The pictures looked great. I'm glad that it went very well. Happy Thanksgiving to all. And I'm looking forward to the Christmas parade because I will be there for that.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Thank you. I'd like to give a shout out to the town clerk, Merrily Hunt and. Hunt and all of her staff for running a great, uh, election, which, um, you know, happened, uh, since our last meeting and, um, everything seemed to work smoothly. There might have been a couple of little hiccups according to my friends, but, um, nothing, nothing worth writing home about, so, thank you to Mrs. Hunt and all of the folks who helped make our election go very, very smoothly on Election Day and in the early voting beforehand. Uh, Mr. Souza, Mr. Gallagher, Mr. Haley, Mr. George, it was a privilege to march with you and in the Trittown Veterans Day Parade, I thought it went very well as well, so I'd send a thanks to East Bridgewater for hosting this year and, um, and it was, it was a great time. Christmas on the Common, the president had mentioned, I just wanna, um, really thank the police department for making this work and making the traffic work the way it does, uh, for that event, it's, um, obviously a very big one, obviously the Lions Club has a, has a big part in that and putting up the decorations every year and thank you, Mr. Wood, for your group doing that. And then lastly, um, Mr. Hall, um, I grew up kind of down the street from him, I grew up with his, uh, children, uh, it's a tragic loss to the town and, um, you won't find a better guy, so I'll just leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so my comments, uh, I guess I'll address, uh, Mr. Souza's obvious disappointment with his relationship with me and my, uh, job as president, um, though I couldn't quite keep track or corroborate or remember a lot of what you had mentioned, I did write it down, um, I will first address the throwing under the bus comment, what that generally refers to, Mr. Souza, is, you know, I've, I've got a phone, business card, can contact me in email, by phone or in person, we can have a nice discussion, you can express to me with a little bit more articulation how you feel at that time, rather than the quote, throw me under the bus in a public forum, that would be really appreciative, so I have a little issue with that, you could reach out to me, my phone has never rung with you on the other side of it. So, please, if you are that unhappy, be a little bit more vocal to me rather than in front of the microphone, little embarrassing, I'm not mad, you said some folks might be mad, wouldn't be mad. I'll give you this, um, as we part, so you can call me, also Seven Goodwin, I think you know where I live, I see you all the time, I see uptown, it'd really be nice to have a good, positive conversation with you, we could work together, so I'm sad that I came to this and you waited for this moment. Yes, it took a while, yes, it was in oversight, my first time doing this as president, my first time doing this in the seat of government, got the block right here with all my notes, I don't, uh, I don't pretend to be very expedient with what I do here, uh, I'm cautious with what I do here, um, I know the government machine doesn't move quite as fast as a lot of us would like, I know that's something that I adjusted to, um, so I just wish that you would, uh, voice your opinion and the way you feel to me personally before you do this in the public forum, I think it's the third time I've reiterated that, I think that's enough. I'm definitely sorry you feel that way. I had some nice discussions with my co-counselors as to, uh, how we could rearrange things, didn't want to ruffle anybody's feathers, other than the complete ruffling of yours apparently that I, I've, I've done by mistake. So, I think for any further discussion that you and I can have in person, we can discuss the block of various committees and I'm sure you'll get some satisfaction out of that for the remainder of your year into the spring, you can get some kind of position on a committee that would be more to your satisfaction, so I hope that makes you happy. So, business card, I'll walk it over to you after the meeting. Now, uh, that's the final council comment, we're gonna move to executive session. I will entertain a motion to move into executive sex, session under MGL, chapter thirty A, section twenty-one A two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and adjourn from executive session.
So moved.
Seconded.
Made and seconded, we get a roll call vote.
Mr. Souza?
Yes.
Mr. Colomboles?
Yes.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Loesch?
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none against.